Please rise for the pledge. Cecily, we'll call please.
Councillor Augsberger, here.
Councillor Bronson?
Here.
Councillor Hagy?
Here.
Councillor Richards?
Here.
Councillor Sanchez?
Here.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Here.
Mayor Coleman? Present. Let the record show that there's seven present and no absence. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's only one side of minutes in there. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Cecily, call for vote, please.
Councillor Bronson?
Yes.
Councillor Hagy?
Yes.
Councillor Richards?
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councillor Augsberger?
Yes.
Let the record show there are seven ayes and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have Milton Moran who's asked to come and speak to us today. So if you'd come forward to this microphone, give your name and the address for the record. We'd love to hear from you.
My name's Milton Moran, Jr. I live at 41899 Shadow Lane in Sweet Home, so I'm not a resident of the city, but I manage Cascade Timber because it's holding right across the street. So can I go move forward in what I have here?
Right now, you've got the floor.
I have good news. Nice mustache, by the way, for the record, sorry. Cascade Timber Consulting, as you know, manages the Hill Timber Limited Partnership lands. And we are actually a wholly owned subsidiary of the Hill Timber Limited Partnership. And that happened in, when we had the action against us by some family members back in the eighties. And, and so anyway, that created the partnership and which helps us manage our timberlands for the family for, for, for many, many, many years. And you may have seen that we're doing some development work over there on that piece of property bought from the Lowens. And that's kind of a, of a statement to my employees and our community that we're here to stay. You know, we've had, I have had more people ask, I hear you're for sale. Well, we're not for sale. We've been approached and we are not selling. So, but to the point this evening, you all know that Bill Marshall was a long-term employee, forty-two years at Cascade Timber, passed away recently. And Bill was a big part of Tree City USA and a big part of Sankey Park. And he was involved quite a bit with, with Sankey Park. And so his family said, rather than flowers, they would like to see donations made toward Phase Three at Sankey Park. And so when I spread the word to the, to the Hill family that Bill had passed, one of them had approached me and asked if there was a charity. And so I checked with the family and they told me about this Phase Three. So they got together and one of them got on the website, took a look and, and there was, information wasn't complete on the website. They thought they, they made a very significant donation. I'm about to present to you all, thinking that was going to finish the project. But, but it's, it's, it's not. Jason and I chatted and we got it figured out. So, but anyway, without too much more visiting here, I have a check for the city of Sweet Home for the Phase Three project for $66,200 from the check. And this is in memory of Bill. And so we would like to work together with city to put together a nice plaque and as, as we go through Phase Three. So, and they've, they've actually embraced this project and, and want to see it, you know, move forward. So anyway, I'm not sure who's the person that I need to hand a check to.
Well, we want to get a picture.
You want to get a picture?
Yes. Social media and do a little bit. We're so thankful for that. Mayor, you want to accept the check?
That kind of make up a great thing. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, council. It's been good work. I'd like to stick around and pick you up, make you up.
And I'm just going to repeat that for the record, what great news that Cascade Timber is not selling. And also thank you so much for the gift in honor of Bill. We really appreciate that. So, thank you. I know that if I don't say it in the microphone, it doesn't make it on the record. So I just wanted to repeat that. Next up on the agenda, which I'm really grateful that this man was here for that last presentation. We have a service recognition. And I'd like Bob Dalton to come forward, please. I'm going to say a few words about him, but I know that Bob has worked tirelessly also on Phase Three for Sankey Park, and he has asked and asked people for money. So I think it's just.
I don't have a check for that amount.
This is perfect timing for you to be here.
Thank you for having me here. I mean, I'm a bit surprised and honored. It means a lot.
Well, we didn't plan it that way. It just happened to work out that way. But I wanted to say a few more words about Bob. Bob Dalton has been a bridge in this community between city leaders and community members. And his heart for the quality of life and honoring the history of Sweet Home is something we would like to see in every community member. He is a tireless volunteer who not only serves the community in public ways by sitting on committees, but also in quiet ways, like helping establish Sunshine Industries. He is a voice of reason and wisdom. And if that is not enough, he lifts up those around him and honors the others by highlighting the work that they do at the annual chamber banquets. And although he's stepping down after more than eight years on the Park and Tree Committee, where he has worked to try and get funding for Sankey Park, he is continuing his commitment to the Community Health Committee, where he has also done extensive work. So I just want to say thank you so much, Bob, for all that you've done for our community and hope that you'll continue to do for our community.
I'm not done yet.
You're not done? That's great.
Far from being done.
But we know that you've worked really hard at Sankey Park and the Park and Tree Committee, or Park and Tree Works. So I just want to say thank you and grateful that you were able to be here to hear about Bill Marshall's gift. Okay. Next under recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions, we have Sean Tate from Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition that is going to give us a short presentation on the work that he's done in recent months.
Anybody hear me okay?
Yes. Go ahead and give your name and your address for the record.
Sure. Sean Tate, 53439 Brookway Way, La Pine, Oregon, 97739. It's a little hotter over here than it is in La Pine.
It's incredible.
Right now, yeah. Ninety-eight when I pulled into town, I think, today. So I was the lobbyist for the Small Municipalities Advocacy Coalition during the last legislative session. And Mayor Coleman asked me to come in today and talk a little bit about small city advocacy within the context of one of the pieces of legislation that I ran during the twenty-five session. So forgive me, I've lost my notes pages, so I'm going to wing it just a little bit, but not my first time talking about this. So, um, do I have the clicker? We don't have a clicker. Okay. There's some click-throughs to some, to a few things. So, okay. Really briefly today, I'm going to touch on the importance of advocacy for small cities. That's probably no surprise to anybody in this room that I have a passion for that. Talk a little bit about a House bill. It was House Bill thirty-five, six, no, thirty-six fifty-four from the last session. Can you go back one? There we go. Thanks. And then talk a little bit about future directions and recommendations. If you would. Thank you. So I don't know who said this, but I saw this quote, and I'm butchering it right now, but I put quotation marks around it just so everybody knows it wasn't me. "The role of government, the act of governance, is to provide the things that citizens and communities need and cannot provide for themselves." While you guys think a little bit about what that means to you, what that means to me is, as, as an advocate and as lobbyist, is providing practical, real results to problems for small cities. And there are many, many issues that need to be addressed for small cities. Go ahead. Just a few notes on what advocacy and an active advocacy policy can do for a city. Representation of local needs. Small cities, as we all know, have very different budgets, very different municipal setups. Show of hands, how many? Not show of hands. How many cities are there in the state of Oregon? Anybody know? Close. Two forty-one. Okay? Of the two hundred and forty-one, two hundred and eleven have populations under twenty thousand. If you factor out the five largest cities in the state, and those all have populations over a hundred thousand, and we all know who they are, the average city in the state of Oregon is less than seven thousand people. Okay? The legislature doesn't talk about small cities in that way. But when you look at the math and you look at it that way, we are a state of small cities. Okay? Two hundred and eleven under twenty thousand is a really powerful opportunity for a powerful voice. Okay? One of the things that does not happen, and we'll touch on that in the bill that I talk about, is equitable resource allocation, right? A lot of bills and policies are enacted and written without necessarily asking up and down the population list of cities how it affects small cities, right? Stronger regional collaboration brings attention to issues that otherwise don't get talked about. And we'll talk about that in a second, too. And, and also a great opportunity for community organizations to come in and weigh in on, on policy issues that you guys are thinking about and working on. And that's, that's really important for building community buy-in. And one of my favorite little quotes, if you aren't at the table, you may in fact be on the menu. And I don't mean that, I don't mean that in a, in a necessarily negative or harmful way, but what it means is that people aren't talking about your needs specific to policy if you're not raising your hand and saying, we have an issue, right? You remember Senator Jackie Winters? Dearly departed Senator Jackie Winters. She was in, in the body for well over twenty years in Salem. Her best quote, most memorable thing from her I ever heard was, if you don't tell us there's a problem, we don't know. Right? So you have to raise your hand and say, we have, we, it hurts here, or it hurts there. And that requires engagement, right? Raising your hand, showing up, yelling a little bit when you need to, saying the quiet part out loud sometimes when you need to. So that's what that means, if you would. So one of the pieces of legislation that I ran in, in the last full session was House Bill thirty-six fifty-four. It did not pass. Let's just get that out of the way right now. Most bills don't. Ninety percent of all pieces of legislation do not make it through the first session that they're introduced. That's just kind of the math. It's far easier to kill a bill than it is to pass a bill, right? This bill was developed by the Small Cities Coalition after multiple conversations about, where does it hurt? What are your hurdles? Why do we still have so many unmet financial needs, things of that nature? The bill was written to do two things for small cities. It was written to level the playing field when it comes to the amount of funds that a small city has to come up with to apply for and get grants for municipal infrastructure projects, right? About twenty-five different grant programs in, within the state that offer funds for those types of projects, and yet for a small city, a matching requirement of twenty or twenty-five percent of those funds is an unattainable number, right? It becomes a very challenging thing to create the capital stack that's necessary to just be able to afford to apply for the grant sometimes, right? The other thing that the bill would have done, or was written to do, was to eliminate some of the barriers for how small cities got to use that money, right? Whole lot of limitations on, well, you can only use it for this after you've done this. And again, we go back to the part where that means the small city has to come up with an awful lot of money, right? Ten percent of a hundred thousand dollar project for a city of a thousand people is an awful lot of money, right? Very hard to come up with. If you would. Another one. This bill in particular is very non-political on purpose, a very practical attempt at a solution that would, that would bring some value back to small cities. We ended up taking a tiered approach to the amount of matching funds that a small city would have to come up with from a very small percentage up to, I think, a maximum of twelve percentage, or twelve percent. Whereas before, it went anywhere from twenty to fifty percent, depending upon the grant program. So the savings was, was baked in and, and was a pretty big deal, if you would. We had a wonderful time in the House with this bill. We had a fantastic hearing and it was in the House Rules Committee, made it out. And when it got to the House floor, there was one no vote, still unexplained. I still don't know why he voted no, but that's okay. Passed out of the House forty-eight to one. Got stalled in the Senate, had to beg, quite frankly, for a work session and for a hearing to get, to, to get the message out. But it happened too late in the session, right? And, and as, as you all know, paying attention, as you do to the last session, about midway through, we got the, the budget analysis from LFO coming out, saying, we have some concerns about what's going to be available as far as discretionary spending. And so i- in any event, the bill got tied up in the Senate and, and did not make it out. That said, the work session produced completely bicameral bipartisan support. Democrat senators, Republican senators signing on as chief co-sponsors, right? Really good outcome for this particular piece of legislation. We simply ran out of runway, quite frankly, which is not uncommon as, as legislation goes. One more. Budget constraints, as I talked about, the unknowns that were still, and in some ways are still unknown, about the federal effects of legislation and what that means to how the, the state will write its budgets for Medicaid and where it will need to go get money from and what funds it needs to tap into. There's a lot of questions that remain unanswered there. So there were some ways and means concerns, if you would. Again, we had an amendment towards the end that clarified the very specific grants that, and the, the numbers, the amounts that, that were specific to those grants, but we ran out of time to get it produced. There were thirty-six hundred individual pieces of legislation dropped during that legislative session. And the, the folks that write amendments and write policy were behind for most of it. So it was difficult. One more. And then legislative priorities. And this is not uncommon, but, but not always talked about. Even within a political party, there are people who view things very differently. And people that have, people that had concerns about ways and means effects on, or the, the effect of this bill on a ways and means budget, things of that nature, kind of held it up, slowed it down. But the good news is, is that we had people talking about it for the first time in a long, long time. We got some great testimony. We had some great partners come in from all over the state and tell some really compelling stories. And one of, I think the, the best ones came out in the, in the Senate hearing, and it was the city of Elgin, who had reported to me that they were celebrating the addition of a hundred and fifty dollars in revenue for the city because they were able to rent out a donated hot dog machine to a softball tournament or a baseball tournament, okay? Hundred and fifty bucks to the library fund is a big, big deal in the city of Elgin. It's not a big deal in the city of Portland, right? If you would. So during the run of this bill, and with many thanks to some friends at the League of Oregon Cities who were very helpful in doing some outreach, we had, I think that number's fifty-seven or fifty-eight cities that signed on as partners for this legislation. A really, really, really big deal considering the number of cities in the state to have, you know, more than twenty-five percent of the small cities in the state come out in support of this bill. Brought attention to the issue of grant affordability. And this is what I mean when I say, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. When these grant programs are written, if small cities aren't standing up saying, we can't afford that twenty-five percent, right, that you've written into this bill, then they don't know that. They assume that it's okay. They assume that you're grateful for the free money, right? And they write the policy. And that was an eye-opener for a lot of, for a lot of people, that those matching amounts were not affordable. The number of people at the diocese that understand small city finance, small city funding is very, very small, right? Unless you're from a small city, you haven't paid attention to it, right? One of the biggest lessons learned is that we needed a longer runway. We didn't start writing this bill until just before session started, right? And I say this a lot in the course of my work, the sausage isn't made during session. The sausage is made in the interim, right? That's when you're building the, the policy framework that you're going to work on. And we didn't have the luxury of time to do that. If we had, I'm not certain it would have passed, but we certainly would have given ourselves more of a chance to fit within the timeframe that we had, right? If you would. So I've been doing this, in this work in particular, for eleven years. And I've been working specifically with small cities for about the last three. And I have some strong opinions about what I think all of those two hundred and eleven small cities in Oregon ought to be doing relative to advocacy. And whether you do these things with or without a professional advocate, they're still very, very, very important. First is to develop, understand and publish what your city's legislative priorities are, right? What do you care about by issue and how might you respond to it? When you do that, you're creating a framework that you have to refer back to operate from. You're making it known publicly what the city stands for and what the city's willing to advocate for and wants to push back against, okay? Engage with other communities on these shared priorities. If one city came to me as a lobbyist and said, I need this fixed, we're going to need more than one city to get it fixed, right? The beauty of every legislator is that they have a city or two or twenty in their district. Todd Nash has forty, right, that applied to this bill. So Todd Nash took a very keen eye towards this piece of legislation. Almost every legislator in Salem had a city that falls into the small city category. Almost every one of them, right? And a coalition honestly is the best way to approach most of this work in the first place. And lastly, show up as elected officials, whether you do it with or without a lobbyist. The people who are elected to bring the value back to the community are the ones that, and quite frankly, need to be standing up in front of policymakers, saying, what, this is what happens when you do this and this is what we need to fix it, right? You have to go to the building. You have to be visible. They have to know that you care. And it's better that you go than sending a lobbyist to say those words for you, right? I can have conversations with them all day long in the hallways. Well, I used to be able to. The hallways are all closed because of construction now. Elevators too, right? You remember the day, get, get in the elevator and have a thirty-second conversation that could change a piece of policy. Those days are, those days are kind of gone, at least for now, right? So what I tell my clients is, you guys are the star of the show. It's you who needs to go up there and tell the story for the community. You are, after all, elected officials, speaking with elected officials, that has a tremendous amount of weight and value, right? So, told you it was a short presentation. I think that's the last slide, other than the one that says, any questions or thank you? Not even that? All right, well, thank you very much for your time and for your interest. Are there any questions, concerns? Trivia you want to talk about, transportation package hearing, anything?
First, I just want to say, I asked Sean to come here because I think that Sweet Home sometimes is separated from what goes on in Salem and at the Capitol. And I think it's always good to have an understanding of how the Capitol works, how legislation works, especially legislation that impacts us. I also have been impressed by the fact that there has been a voice at the Capitol that specifically is watching out for small municipalities, because I don't know that we're getting that kind of advocacy from other agencies. That being said, are there any questions from councillors?
Madam Mayor, I do. So did you get a fiscal on that bill?
There was no fiscal.
Oh, and they still wouldn't hear it?
And, and they still wouldn't hear it. The reason why there was no fiscal is that we were not asking for a new bucket of money. We were simply asking for a change in the formula. I think some people assumed that that would create a fiscal, but we don't believe that it, that it does. What, what it ultimately would do is potentially affect how much goes to a different small city, but it would not increase the overall amount of money that was in that bucket from which they could divvy it out. Does that make sense? We just changed it inside the formula.
That makes sense to me. And then secondly, you are the lobbyist for SMAC?
Was.
Oh, was.
Was.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of councillors? Thank you so much, Sean, for coming.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time.
That was very informative. I appreciate it.
Okay, take care.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is ordinance bills, the third reading of ordinance bill. Number eight, yes, excuse me.
Is this by title only?
Yes, by title only.
I will read that. Ordinance number eight for twenty twenty-five, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance, amending Sweet Home Municipal Code, Section nine point two zero point zero four zero, city property exclusion.
Okay. Thank you for reading that by title only. We have it before us to see if we would like to approve it as an ordinance. If any councillor would like to make that motion?
So moved as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. Cecily, can you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Hagy?
Yes.
Councillor Richards?
Yes.
Councillor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councillor Augsberger?
Yes.
Councillor Bronson?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve ordinance bill number eight for twenty twenty-five. Reports of committee, any reports from councillors regarding the committees that they sit on? Your microphone's not on.
Did you all hear that? Health committee meeting tomorrow, four o'clock, in this room, in this building. You're all welcome.
I do want to say thank you so much for the Health Committee, for the wonderful health fair. It was well-attended. Great job. So many people showed up. Lots of resources available to our people in need. So thank you for doing that. Any other councillors have reports from their committees? Department reports? We have two department reports in our packet. Do any directors want to highlight those reports? Nope. Moving on. Reports of city officials. City managers report.
Madam Mayor, Council, I have several things to report on. At the PD, I guess this could have gone under PD stuff, but I threw it in here. We are currently going through autism-friendly training and certification. So we're pretty excited about that. It just prepares us for interacting with folks in the community that might have autism and how to make, you know, them more comfortable and engage with them in, in ways that are appropriate and makes them feel comfortable. So we're super excited about that. Once we're done with that, we'll get that certification. So it's pretty cool. I wanted to give kudos to the Sweet Home Fire District and the partner agencies that responded to the fire up Rice Road and the Crescent Hill area, just outside of Sweet Home yesterday. They, I was listening to the radio and you could hear the stress in their voices, but they were attacking that thing just from the get-go. And I thought they did a wonderful job. I noticed that today at four thirty- the get-go, and I thought they did a wonderful job. I noticed that today, at four-thirty, the Lynn County Sheriff's Office confirmed that all evacuation notices have been lifted, and fire crews are now doing their mop-up operations. And it sounds like the initial investigation indicated that there was a truck that drove through a field with tall grass that started it on fire, and I think there was a motor home that was damaged. Some sort of outhouse had some damage, but other than that, no additional structures were, were harmed. So, very thankful for our fire crews out there, and I'm sure, I know that there were some other people that were like, non-fire people that showed up with water, and so, really thankful for those people in the community. Another thing I wanted to draw council's attention to, and I'd just say thank you all for, and the community for, was National Night Out. It was a huge success. I'm just thankful for staff that pulled, pulled that off. Angela, for the mapping that you did, and all of the hard work to help Sean and Jennifer. I am super thankful for that, because I was standing on the street that night, thinking, you know, we activated Festival Street, which we've wanted to, you know, get the ball rolling on this for years. So, we did that, had National Night Out, which was a first in many years, and the turnout was really phenomenal, and I'm, I'm thankful for all of you. That turned out, I was watching people sit in chairs around tables, eating burgers and dogs, and I have to tell you, I had one member of the community strolling through, and I knew the guy, and it was, he said hi to me, and I said, "Hey, what are you doing here?" And he said, "Well, I just, I didn't know this was going on, but I saw it happening, and I thought, 'I'm going to wander over here and check it out.'" And he told me that, you know, a few years ago, when I heard about the whole downtown streetscape and Thirteenth Avenue being Festival Street, he said, "I was really skeptical, but now that I'm here and actually seeing this," he's like, "I don't know why we don't do this more often." And so, that was a huge win. So, anyway, thank you for partnering with that, and thank you to Sweet Home. Just a reminder, Harvest Festival, Friday, October, or I'm sorry, not Friday, Saturday, October fourth, at Sankey Park. We still need some chili and pie judges, so if you're interested, or if anyone in the community is, connect with Angela down here for that. Coffee with the mayor is on Thursdays, three to four, so anyone in the community that's interested in connecting with you, Mayor, and just having a, a good time, just having coffee and asking questions and chatting with you, I would encourage you to do that, from three to four. Another thing I wanted to counsel to know is that we got a tentative offer for the generator out back that has been sitting out there for years. So, we wanted to get that thing sold, you know, we don't want it to depreciate in any more value, and so, we have that tentative offer with Peterson Cat for that. So, that should put some cash in our pocket if it works out soon. And then, CSC resiliency box out back. So, CSC has their resiliency box installed, which means they have some stuff in there for emergency, you know, in case there's an emergency in the area. So, like water, they have some MREs for food, some pop-up tents, you know, to set up in case we need to, you know, serve people. So, anyway, all of that to say is that's pretty exciting that we have that back there and ready for any kind of an emergency. I think that's pretty much it. So, if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from councilors?
One question. Can you tell us what we're getting for the generator?
The generator is coming in right at, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I know it's right at about forty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Hearing none. Moving on to the next item is the mayor's report. I just want to reiterate what City Manager Ogden has shared regarding the fire. I don't know about everybody else, but our power went out again last night because of the fire, and we had people, we had our first family literacy night, and we had thirty people show up, and you know, they stuck around, even though the power went out, as soon as they walked in the building, and there was no AC, and it was a hundred degrees, but they stuck around for the whole time, and as soon as the last one left, the power came back on. We even had people in there that, one of their person in there, their house was being threatened by the fire, and they still sat through that whole thing and enjoyed that, and signed up to volunteer to teach a child to read. So, it was really successful, and I was really grateful for Sweet Home PD, I'm sorry, for Sweet Home Fire, and Brownsville, and Halsey, and Lebanon, and SIO, and Albany, and ODF, all of the agencies that participated, they just work really well together, and they attacked it quickly and got it taken care of. Appreciate that. I also wanted to highlight Furniture Share. It's an organization that's in Albany, that they actually, if there's a veteran in need of furniture to outfit an apartment, they actually will supply all of the things that you need for an apartment, from, including kitchen appliances, dishes. I went to an event that they hosted, and I was just really impressed by their organization, and they are pretty active here in Sweet Home as well. So, if you ever have somebody in need of furniture, please give them a shout-out. And I do want to highlight again, the health fair. It is in combination with the backpack handout, the annual one that gives backpacks to kids in need. And we had a lot of people that show up. It was a rainy morning, Saturday morning, and there were a lot of people in attendance. All kinds of agencies from around the county and Albany showed up to just tell people what they offer to our community members, and mostly people in need. So, it was a great event, and I really appreciate everybody who participated in that. That is the end of the mayor's report. Moving on to council business for the good of the order. Any council business?
Madam Mayor, I have one thing. I just want to say to all the people that helped during the rodeo, that was fun, so good job, and thank you.
It was a fun night, too, huh? Anybody else? Hearing none. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at seven oh six PM. We do have an executive session that we're going to now open up, and I need the public to exit the building, or the room. You don't have to exit the building.